I'd like to call to order this February 24th, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting. Mr. Anagostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Cobain? Not present. Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stovchak?
Here.
And Mrs. Hausen?
Here.
Mrs. Cobain is out of town. She is excused. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is district goals. I lost it. There we go. Our district goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And tonight, we're going to highlight academic achievement and growth. And I wanted to give a shout-out to Strongsville High School junior Aubrey Kosis, who will be studying Shakespeare at St. John's College in Oxford, England, this summer at the Midsummer Conservatory Program with the British Academy of Dramatic Arts. Audrey is going to attend classes in acting, character, history, and voice, and participate in day trips to London and Stratford, master classes on weekends, and productions by the Royal Shakespeare Company and at the Globe. The three-week summer program at the University of Oxford immerses students ages 16 to 18 in acting, voice, and movement classes, along with cultural studies and Shakespeare's time. Here, students develop their skills in the acting process, analysis, and critical thinking, which will also help to meet the challenges of applying for college or drama school. And so Aubrey has recently advanced to the regional branch of the ESU Shakespeare Competition, and she will compete with other Cleveland students. And that's just about as cool as I think you can get. So we congratulate Aubrey and thank her for being an example of academic achievement and growth. We are going to jump out of order because we have some really good recognition today, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. To start us off with our recognitions, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Stovchak to start us off.
Can I have Peggy Kamets meet me at the podium?
That's right, you can clap for her.
This year, we've started a new program where we are recognizing educators and teachers who go above and beyond, go the extra mile for our students in our district. And as our very first recipient of an award, the Extra Mile Award, given by the Strongsville School Board, Peggy Kamets has been awarded that distinction. And we're so very proud and honored to be able to give that to her. Peggy Kamets is one of the speech and language therapists at the preschool. Not only does she serve preschool students in our preschool program at Chapman Elementary School, she also serves preschool students in our community preschools. Megan Cirso, who is the preschool director, said, "I truly don't know if there are words to capture how valuable Peggy is to our district. Peggy goes above and beyond each and every day to provide her students with fun and engaging lessons. Top it off, she always has a positive attitude and a smile on her face. She makes genuine connections with all of the students at Chapman Elementary School, and she was the former speech and language pathologist at the building. With her previous classroom training experience as the intervention specialist in our district, she truly understands the needs of our families, teachers, and students. Peggy truly goes the extra mile both in school and out. As a Strongsville resident herself, it's likely that you have seen her running those extra miles around the community as well." Congratulations, Peggy. And to show just how far above and beyond Peggy goes for her job, we were supposed to award this to her in the morning the other day, and she was out. And I found out where she was going to be at Chapman later, and we went to go give it to her. And it was supposed to be a day off, and she still showed up to help her students and check in and do more than her fair share. So on her day off, she came in to help her kids, and that is when we presented her with the award. And even then, she had no idea what was going on. She was just going on and on about the plans she had for the day, and the mask she wears so the kids can see her face, and it's a robot mask. And it was, we gave it to her. The first time I ever met her, I'm crying because she was just so excited, and I was so excited. And you could just tell what a great educator and person she is. So it is an honor to be able to give her this distinction as our inaugural recipient of the Extra Mile Award in Strongsville City Schools. You're very welcome.
Those of you who know me know I could probably talk for like hours. Thank you very much. I'm very humbled by this. The beauty about being an educator, for as long as I've been one, first of all, I have to thank my husband, because he puts up with my wackiness and supports this district like no one. And he's not here tonight because he's recovering from a surgery, but I have to thank him. But the beauty about being in education is that every day, you get to work with staff that's here from the preschool, but that do amazing things. And they don't get always that recognition. But you also have the opportunity to work with families and children and impact them in a way that you don't always know. But to witness, to be able to witness for this whole, my whole career, like people learning and having joy and having excitement, that's why we all do this job. It's an amazing job. It's hard sometimes, but we do it because we're passionate about it. And as you can tell, and then I get all excited about it, but I thank you. It's really for all the people that do this job all the time and don't get the recognition. But I thank you, and I don't know what else to say. I'm speechless, which is amazing for me.
Very well deserved. And what we're going to do next is move on. Not a recognition, but we have a new hire that we wanted to spotlight, so I'm going to turn it over to Jenny to do that.
Thank you. So later this evening in my agenda, I will be recommending our new girls soccer coach to you. So Chloe Fadden-Holz is here tonight. I'll have Chloe come up to the podium and say a few things to you. But she played actually Division One Soccer at Cleveland State University. She also recently has coached at both Orange Hill High School and also at Avon Lake as an assistant varsity coach. She already knows many of our student athletes as she coaches and volunteers her time and works with several of our athletes. And then she continues to play herself in a college league. So, you know, her knowledge of the sport is extensive, and we're just thrilled to have her and recommend her for our new position.
Well, thank you for having me. As you said, I'm Chloe, new girls head soccer coach. I want to thank you guys for this opportunity. I'm really excited to be working with not only the high school girls, but I plan to be working with the youth. Getting going already. Sunday, I'll be coming to foot skills to watch some of the middle school kids work. And then going to be meeting the team on Tuesday, so we're going to get going right away. So I'm really excited, and again, thank you guys for this opportunity.
Thank you, Chloe.
And that ends our recognitions.
Well, I know I'm excited just because Peggy's very infectious, and whenever you're around her, you can't help but be excited. And then to have our new soccer coach getting ready, and, you know, soccer season's a little bit away, but ready to hit the ground running, that's all. I'm sure she was taking her lead from Peggy also, but congratulations, and we look forward to wonderful things. Next on our agenda is public comment, and we went out of order so that we could let people leave if they need to leave, but we have no public comment unless somebody wants to change that from the floor. That's public comment. Approval of minutes. We have the January 27th and February 10th Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes. All district video and audio recordings are permanent part of the minutes and available on our website. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hausen, second by Ms. Stovchak. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Ms. Stovchak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion passes. Next up is treasurer's report, but before we get to that exciting report, if anybody does have homework or wants to escape for any other reason, now is your time to do it. George, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first item, Item A, which is the financial report for the month ending January 31st, 2022, which can be found in Exhibit A. And then, as usual, I have my supplemental report that I can quickly go over to just give some highlights on how the district's doing financially through January. So just a quick summary, the current year-to-date revenue collections indicate a $507,000 favorable compared to the forecast. Expenditures are trending $24,584 under the forecast at this point, which would result in a net impact to cash balance of $532,000 at the end of the year. And we'll go, in a few slides, we'll go a little bit more into detail on those differences. The projected cash balance at June 30th, 2022, which is the end of fiscal year, will be estimated at this point in time, $59,671,000, which is, again, $523,000 more than what was forecasted in November at $59.1 million, which is also about $6.6 million more than the cash balance at the end of last fiscal year. So revenue collections for the month of January, overall, total revenue for January is up 17.3%, or $926,000 compared to last January. The biggest changes is timing. We had our first tax collection advance for the first half of the calendar year. That was actually $600,000 less than what it was last January. We had our second bigger advance in February, and then we'll have our settlement in March, when we'll see what we actually receive for property taxes. The biggest increase was state revenue. We received $1.6 million more in state revenue in January than we did last January, and the reason for that is, as we've been talking the prior months, the new state funding formula was fully enacted, was passed at the beginning of this fiscal year, and then fully enacted January 1st. So what the state did was they made a catch-up payment in January for the prior months to get everyone caught up to where they should be for January. So that's why it looks a little skewed, but the remaining months will be more comparable moving on now. And then all other revenue is about $130,000 less than it was less compared to last January. Looking at it at a year-to-date, year-to-date revenues are about $324,000 more than they were compared to January year-to-date last year. Property taxes are about $3,000 less, so those are coming about the same rate that we had the prior year. Again, state revenue, $820,000 more than last year. Again, it's mainly due to the implementation of the new Fair Funding Formula. And then, as we'll see on the next page, overall, it's going to be about $500,000 more than what we estimated in the forecast. And then all other revenue is about $500,000 less than it was last year, which was primarily due to workers' comp refunds and premium reimbursements that we received last fiscal year, which were one-time dollars. And how revenues are trending compared to the forecast, right now, I still have taxes based on the forecast. We'll see how they actually come in by the end of March, and that will be our last collection for the fiscal year for property taxes in March. So we'll have an actual number at that point in time. State revenues, as mentioned a little bit ago, they're trending about $500,000 more than the November forecast. And then all other revenues are trending to where they should be through January. So overall, revenues are trending about $500,000 higher compared to November, or 0.62%. Any questions on revenue before I go to expenses? So expenses comparing January of this year in comparison to January of last year, expenses are actually down $311,000 compared to January of last year. And it's made up in two components: salary and benefits is actually up by $225,000, while purchase services is down by close to $300,000. And that primary difference for the purchase services is, again, due to the Fair Funding Formula, where we don't have the past three dollars that we had to record as expenses. So purchase services is going to look down all year. Comparison, then, once we get into next year and have that comparative data, that'll be more equalized. And looking at it at a year-to-date, overall expenditures are $1.1 million higher than they were through January of last year. And the differences are salary and benefits are up by $1.8 million, while purchase services are down by $800,000. And then all other expenses are up about $80,000. And again, that's mostly due to timing. And that $1.1 million represents about 2.7% higher through this January to last January. And then how we're trending the rest of the year compared to the forecast, overall, about $24,000 different compared to the forecast, forecasting out the rest of the months. Salary and benefits are estimated to be $262,000 less, or 0.4%. And then purchase services and all other supplies, about $200,000 more than what was trended in November. So we'll continue to monitor for the rest of the year and continue to update each month. Any questions on expenses overall? All right. And then the actual financial report can be found in Exhibit A. Moving on to Item B, new fund for fiscal year '22, a state grant fund 499-9122. Operations manager, Mr. Brechner, applied for Ohio Attorney General's Fiscal Year '22 School Safety Grant in the amount of $28,997.63, which we awarded. It's becoming an annual grant with the Attorney General's to be used on school safety. And what we're going to be, what we applied for, stop-the-bleed kits to go along with our AEDs. And then any leftover dollars will be used for security cameras, along with another grant that Mr. Brechner's applying for. And then Item C, grant approvals. We have the school safety grant, as I just touched on. And then also, found in Exhibit B, we have a Strongsville Education Foundation grant of $4,930. There's several, there's about seven different grants that they're awarded under this award, and they were applied through the council PTA that wasn't able to award, which the Strongsville Education Foundation was able to pick up. And those are outlined in the exhibit. Item D, we have a Student Activity Program budget revision for Strongsville MD Vocational Training Student Activities Account, and that's the one that runs the, where all the activity goes through the New Spirit Shop at the high school, increasing their budget from $15,345 to $22,755 due to their increased activity. And then the last item is Item E, the Fiscal Year '22 amended appropriation measure to be increased based on the items listed in the exhibit. There's no further questions. That concludes my report.
Any questions for George? Nice job.
Thank you.
Dr. Reiba?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. We do have a couple discussion items on the agenda. I'm going to ask Megan Cirso to come and join us up here at a table. Megan, as we know, we just heard, is one of our special education coordinators. She's our preschool director. And I just want to thank our preschool staff for being here tonight. That's awesome to be here to recognize and support Peggy, as well as be here as a part of the presentation that Megan's going to give. You know, as Megan will share, we serve students from ages three to six at the preschool, and these are some of the individuals that do a phenomenal job in meeting the needs of our typical peers and our students with disabilities at our two locations, whether it's at the Lund Road Preschool or the preschool at Chapman. So today, Megan's here to talk about, there's been a lot of changes in preschool over recent years. One of those changes is the topic of tonight's discussion. So board members, as I've shared with you in my updates, Megan's goal tonight is to share a variety of what changes have happened in the rules, what's the why behind those changes, what are some options and recommendations that we have. This is the start of the process, so we're not looking for a decision tonight. This is kind of foundational understanding. You'll have an opportunity to interact and engage with Megan and ask any questions you may have as we continue to take a look at what preschool is going to look like in our district starting in fall of 2022. So let me hook up the projector, Megan, if you want to turn the clicker on, if it's not already on. And then I will turn it over to you.
Great, thank you, Cameron. In front of you, you have a one-pager. I tried to make it shorter and do a summary because there's a lot of changes. So this is kind of the basic summary of what has to happen, why, how, and how we're going to do that. In the slides, I'll go into a little bit more detail, but first, yes, thank you to the staff for being here. I'm so appreciative to have support. Cameron, thank you for your support. I know this has been challenging for a lot of districts, and it's nice to have the support of the superintendent, our director of student services, and also the board. Thank you, guys, for allowing me to be here and share this information with you. I have to remember that I've been learning this for about the last eight months, and when Cameron's like, "Try to narrow it down a little." I'm like, "Well, I'll do my best." So there's a lot of rule changes. It's very confusing, so I'll do my best. Please stop me and ask for clarification because I tend to talk a little fast. So, all right, if you want to turn to your slides, I just have the table contents, kind of talking you through where we're going to go tonight, just talking about why are we here? Our enrollment trends, the past, current, and future enrollment, based on our best predictions, definitions and models of the classroom types and examples, the new requirements and the new classroom types, the impact to the district, the potential impact to the district, and then time, if we have any, for questions or comments or feedback. So as Cameron said, we serve students who turn three, typically developing peers who turn three by August 1st. We also serve preschoolers with disabilities on their third birthday. So something that's a little unique to us is that we have rolling enrollment all year for students with special needs. If you've heard of Bright Beginnings or Help Me Grow, we get notified about 90 days before the child's third birthday, and then we're required to evaluate and have an IEP in place should they be eligible by their third birthday. So the joke we have, we're kind of like, you know, it's always September because we always have new kids coming in in February. We have brand-new three-year-olds with six-year-olds who have been there all year. So it's quite the challenge to serve all of them. So we are licensed by the Ohio Department of Education. We're a little bit different than daycare. They're the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services, although some of our rules are the same. Let's see. Something that I wanted to talk about briefly is that I'm really proud that we have increased the academic rigor at the preschool this year. We're using something called My Igdis. It's a screener that we use three times a year to screen and progress monitor our students, just like Ames Web. We don't do that on our new three-year-olds because they're learning how to do school and how to do life, but everyone four and up, we take that data, we progress monitor, we run intervention groups very similar to the elementary schools, and then we're able to provide that to the receiving kindergarten building, so they're not spending months guessing, "Hey, you know what? Did that work? Did it not? The student uses this token board. It's very successful. Let's keep going with that." So it's a really nice program that we've brought to the district, and I hope that we continue to use that. And one more thing that I'm really proud of, too, is that we also provide families with parenting support and connect to other community resources. So a lot of times, it's the first time that the children have ever been away from their parents, which can be difficult, and we're talking about students who may be nonverbal, who may struggle with routine or communication. So it's really cool to be a part of that and then to see them for three years in our So a little bit about our enrollment. I included the last five years of enrollment just to show the enrollment trends over time. So as you can see, our IEPs kind of go on a steady increase as well as our total enrollment. Five years ago, we were only at 114 students, and as of right now, as it sits, yesterday had a new one qualify, so it's off by one, a total of 176 students that we serve. And by the end of April, we'll be at 190 with all of those Bright Beginning students. So that's if they qualify. I'm predicting that they will, but I'm not totally sure. So 190 is our full capacity. So what you can see is just over time, it continues to grow, which is a really great thing, and it's awesome to be able to provide that education for the students in our district. So why are we here? Preschool's really fun, right? We're celebrating Peggy. We're talking about what we do. That's great. Well, the not-so-great thing is that, or great, I don't know, depends on how you look at it. The Ohio Department of Ed enacted a rule change in July of this past summer, and the problem was that our rule in Ohio didn't match the federal rule. So there was no phase-in, and it was quick. Typically, there's public comment. It goes back and forth, and it was just like, "Here you go, districts, you're doing it." And everybody was like, "Eh, are they? Are they not? We're not sure." And districts didn't really change what we were doing because we didn't really have a whole lot of guidance. It was just, "Here's the rule. You need to comply." So in January of this past year, we were inspected and found to be noncompliant because two of our classrooms were out of ratio, and I'll kind of go into that a little bit later. So on February 3rd, I issued a corrective action plan to the state of Ohio, talking about our proposed plan, what we're going to do now, and then what I'm proposing to do for the fall. And it's, we're not alone. I hate to say that 80% of the programs in our county that have been inspected are also out of compliance. So we're not the only ones. I guess it's nice to have some company with that, so. The main, the biggest change to the rule is staff and the way we serve kids with disabilities. But a few other unfunded mandates are that all of our staff have to be CPR and first aid-trained. Previously, it was one person in the building. Now it's every single person who's alone with a preschool child must have that training. So that's just something to point out. That includes our substitute teachers, and we know it's super challenging to get subs right now, and now to have them be CPR-trained is just kind of another challenge that we'll be facing. Another new requirement that we're also still trying to figure out is that if our students receive an itinerant speech with Peggy Kamets, our itinerant speech therapist, we're now required to offer them an hour of GenEd instruction in our preschool per week. So that's another little challenge for staffing. So the biggest change is that our teachers can no longer serve in a dual role like they're doing now. So what our current teachers do is teach the class, and they serve their students on IEPs. So they have eight peers, eight students on IEPs, they're teaching and doing their IEPs, and the state said, "No more." So I'll get into more detail of that in the next slides. So before we talk about the challenges, I'm going to go through some of the definitions because it does get a little tricky. So the state has, they call a special education classroom kind of two different things. The first one is six students with disabilities and no peers. Typically, that's for our students with lower communication skills, maybe they have behavior where they're not ready to be in a classroom with other peers, but it's always our goal to build them up and then get them into that inclusion classroom. The second one is an integrated special ed classroom. That's currently what we have right now. That's eight students with disabilities and eight peers in each classroom. The special ed classroom two, these are kind of my definitions to make it easier to understand, that's eight students with disabilities and four peers. The GenEd classroom, which would be six students with disabilities and 10 peers. And the CoToc classroom, which could be up to eight students with disabilities and 12 peers. So does it always have to be eight and eight in the integrated? No, it could be six and six, five and five. You just have to have that 50/50 ratio at all times. And something that's in the parentheses there is the adult-to-student ratio. When you're talking special education or integrated, it's one to six, one adult to six children. And when you talk about GenEd or CoToc, it's one adult to 12 children. So I'll talk a little bit about staffing ratios in the upcoming slides. Any questions on this one? It's a lot. Okay, so our current classroom model, what we have right now are integrated classrooms or integrated special education classrooms. I say special ed because it's 50% students with disabilities, and the state does not recognize that as a general education setting. That's kind of the problem here. So right now, it's one lead teacher who's either dual-licensed or preschool special education teacher, and I have that bolded because that's also a problem. The state said, "No more. You cannot have a special ed teacher delivering general ed content. That needs to be a GenEd teacher." That needs to be a Gen Ed teacher and then a special ed teacher needs to provide the IEP services. Um, so what we do right now and why we were found non-compliant is because I had more peers in a classroom than IEPs. So technically, it was a general education classroom with a preschool special education teacher teaching. Now by April, I will fill those spots. That's typically what we do, but they said, too bad, you don't have it right now out of compliance. So that's in my plan that I submitted to the state. Um, let's see, and again, to point out in this ratio, it's one adult to six children because it's considered a special ed classroom.
And Megan, before you go on, just to kind of clarify what we do in practice, in the fall, there's a list of typical peers that want to be a part of our preschool. We accept all of the typical peers that we have room for because if we don't, they go to other preschool placements and then we have a difficulty with the ratio. So if you take a look at our classrooms in August or September, there may be eight peers, as it says, but maybe only three students with, uh, disabilities. And then as, as we found, as the group moves up to April, we eventually get that eight to eight.
Yeah, so what the state is saying is that's a Gen Ed classroom. Really, you're starting with more peers than IEPs, which is a great model. That's what we want. Our students on IEPs learn from our typical peers. It's just the way we go about it, they said, you can't do that anymore, so. On the next slide, um, the new requirements for the integrated classroom. I briefly mentioned this, that the teacher now must be a Gen Ed teacher or dual license teacher. That means they have the preschool special education and the Gen Ed license for preschool. So the challenge there is that four of our teachers, um, would no longer be able to teach in the current classroom model that we have because they only have that preschool special education license. Um, and why not keep the model? Uh, this is what we kind of alluded to before, is that you have to maintain that 50-50 ratio at all times, which can be a challenge. So I'm going to go into challenges next and then I can clarify any questions on that. So as Cameron mentioned, we fill all of our peer spots, which is awesome. Right now, we have 40 on a waiting list that for this year won't get in because we don't have room. So it's a good problem to have that the community is looking for high-quality preschool. Um, but yeah, we stack our rooms with the peers and then we add the IEPs as we go, which they said we can't do anymore. So in order to keep that integrated classroom, I would have to start with the same amount of IEPs and peers. So let's say a room has three IEPs, you start with three peers. Student on an IEP qualifies in November, I have to go down the list and call the peers. Hey, it's November, do you still need a spot? No, next person on the list, no, next person on the list. So the state gives you a two-week window to fill that spot, which is pretty challenging. I hate to put the parents in that situation. I'm a parent myself, I have three young kids, and I don't know many parents that can wait through, you know, till mid-year to get a spot in our program. So that's the biggest challenge there. It's, it's not the biggest deal to amend the IEPs, but we plan that based on what the team decides. So if the team decides the student needs a general education classroom, I can't just put them in an integrated room to make it fit because that's what we have. It's what the IEP team decided. Any questions on that one? Okay. So with our proposed change, whoops, skipped a slide. All right, so the implementation challenges, more challenges, um, for these classrooms. I previously discussed the integrated one with the eight and eight. Um, the special ed classroom, I just don't really agree with this model. It's eight students with disabilities and four peers. So our whole program is built on the premise that our students who don't have disabilities are the peer models. If we only have four in a classroom and I have eight students who are nonverbal or have low communication skills, it doesn't really work. So I, I'm not crazy about that model and it's also limiting. It would cut our peers in half and the community is showing us that we need high-quality preschool and I have a waiting list. So I'd be really excited to be able to get more peers in the program. And then the COTAT classroom, the challenge with this, yeah, it's great because it's more kids, it's more students on IEPs in one classroom. Um, but another little licensing rule is that you have to have 35 square feet per child. And the rooms at the building, um, that I'm in right now only hold 19 to 20 total students, but the adults are in there too. So you just add up the, do the square footage, divide by 35, and that gives you how many kids can be in a room. We don't have the, um, classroom sizes to accommodate 20 students in a classroom. That's a challenge there. Um, and then just to mention in the box down below, we do have that one classroom, six students in the AM, six in the PM with disabilities with no peers. So I think this slide gives you a nice visual model of what it currently looks like, that integrated room. There's the eight and eight. Um, there is the adult to student is the one to six. One lead teacher, two special ed assistants, eight peers, eight IEPs, that's on the left side. And then on the right side, the Gen Ed model would be going from that one to six ratio for one to 12. So you would need one lead teacher, one special education assistant instead of two, and you would have 10 peers and six IEPs. So while that does increase our peers, it eliminates two IEPs out of each class session, which is why we would need to add more classrooms. And I'll get into those slides in a minute. So the impact that this has, um, we would like to propose moving from the integrated classroom model to the Gen Ed model and keep one special ed classroom without peers, just to keep that continuum there. Again, with the goal being to build those students into a classroom that have peers. Um, reduce one special education assistant from each classroom because the ratio goes from one to six to one to 12. So you don't need three adults anymore, you need two. Hire, or add three additional preschool classrooms and then hire five Gen Ed teachers and three intervention specialists. So I know math has not been my strong suit and I know you're going to say, like, three rooms, eight people. Like, really? Yeah, really. So when there's a Gen Ed teacher and that special ed teacher pushing in, it increases the amount of staff that you have to have. So the general education teacher would be responsible for teaching, just like in any other classroom. And the intervention specialist would have up to 20 students on IEPs on their caseload. So they would serve an AM and a PM with one teacher, an AM and a few students in the PM in another room. So they would be going between rooms. Um, and then again, our current teachers both teach the Gen Ed curriculum and do the IEPs, which is what they're saying you can't do anymore. And I don't think we need to click on the link for the proposed classrooms, but it's there. I know you guys were looking at the slides earlier today. Um, it's just a proposal of what it could look like so you have a visual. So the proposed-
So Megan, before, before you go on, just to clarify again, the reason we would need to add three classrooms is because in the general education model, we're reducing two students with disabilities. However, based on our projections of where enrollment is going to go, we need those spots somewhere. So we just can't say, okay, we could take two spots away from all of these classrooms and still be okay. If, if students are identified in this rolling calendar and they're three and we do not have room to serve them in our school district, then we have to find a way to serve them and pay for those services in another location. So it's either we control high-quality preschool education in our district or we have to pay for it elsewhere. And the other challenge is, is, as Megan's alluded to, there are a lot of state requirements for what preschool classrooms have to look like. So it's not something like we could say in February, we've done this in the past, right? And it's been a challenge. Um, but we can't just say in February, hey, we've, we've reached that maximum, we've got to add another classroom. We've got to plan for that now, um, because that's going to cause some, um, low maintenance, not maintenance, but low renovation, uh, um, and changes to some of our classrooms to make them preschool-ready. So we don't fix one problem and then get, uh, found in violation of the, the room requirements that are had. So back over to you, Megan.
Thank you. And it, like, uh, Cameron said, it's not a problem that's unique to our district. Just last week, Brunswick called to ask if I could sell them some spots because they're out. And I'm like, no, sorry, go somewhere else. I don't have any, like, come on. Um, everybody is feeling the squeeze right now. Um, and when you have to add a room mid-years, Cameron said, it's not fun. We did it in our lunchroom a couple of years ago. Um, square footage gives you 12 kids in there with an adult-sized sink, no bathroom. So it's a challenge to add at mid-year. Can you? Maybe, but it's not, it's not the best for the kids. Um, so the proposed changes for Lund Road, just kind of in a visual, um, we do have classrooms at Lund Road and then two within Chapman Elementary School. The current model's at the top, um, where we have the eight sessions, yeah, I'm sorry, eight sessions with 64 peers, 64 students with disabilities, four teachers, remember, they're doing both of those jobs. So it says zero intervention specialists because right now they're doing both of those jobs. And then eight assistants. And then, um, the little line below, I'm sorry, this is Lund Road, not Chapman. The line below would be including, um, our small group classroom because there's one teacher and two special education assistants in there. Again, with the six students with, um, moderate to intensive disabilities, they do need a little bit more support with having two aides in that classroom. So the proposal down below, um, adds a classroom, which would give us 10 total sessions. That's including the AM and the PM, 100 peers, which is awesome because it's so much more opportunity for our students here. Um, it does reduce the number of students with disabilities by four, um, which is a challenge. It's something to consider. And then the teachers, the intervention specialists and the aides would kind of split out because again, they're not doing two jobs. Um, so capacity considerations for this is that we would add 36 peers, lose four spots for students with disabilities, which I've accommodated for at Chapman in the next slide, add a classroom, add two Gen Ed teachers, zero intervention specialists, just based on the way I've shifted our current staff, and lose three special education aides at this location. Okay? So for Chapman, we have the current integrated classroom model. There's four sessions, 32 peers, 32 students with disabilities, two teachers, zero intervention specialists because they're doing both, and four aides. So for the proposed Gen Ed classrooms, um, we have an option A and an option B there. So option A gives us the, pretty much the exact amount of IEP spots that we have now, which is 94. I'm a little hesitant to do that because that gives zero room for growth. So we've accommodated for those four extra spots, pulling them from Lund Road in the option B, which would give us an increase of 48 peers, 16 students with disabilities. It adds two classrooms, three Gen Ed teachers, three intervention specialists, and zero special education aides because we would be able to shift two into those new classrooms over there. So again, option A adds one teacher, one classroom. Option B adds two. Option A doesn't allow any room for growth and option B gives us those, um, 12 extra IEP spots. Any questions? Should have waited, that was my last slide. Any questions? It's a lot of information.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Do we have a, a proposed plan of where exactly in Chapman this extra classroom is going to go?
We've looked. Um, I've been working with our director of student services and the principal at Chapman currently, Kaylee, to try to figure out how we could consolidate some things that have rooms that might not need a full classroom and then to put our, the two preschool classrooms in the building. The challenge with the preschool room is the square footage and then you have to have a plumbed sink. For some reason, the portable sink is not allowed in the rules. So that's a challenge we've run into, is trying to find a room that has a sink that could accommodate 16 students.
But we do, based on our preliminary view, we do, uh, feel that we could fit the two classrooms at Chapman.
Um, the other question I have, um, the way, if I think I understand this right, the, the ratio is changing and now there's more students to fewer teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
Yes.
Is, that's the law. Are we allowed to provide more teachers? We just can't go under that?
You could provide more special education assistants. I don't know that you would need another full teacher in the classroom, but yes, you could provide another assistant in the classroom.
So is going to this higher ratio of students to teachers problematic for our students?
I don't think so because if you think of the model now, there's eight students on IEPs and eight peers with the teacher and two aides. You'd, you'd be going to 10 typically developing peers and six IEPs. So you're taking the amount of IEPs down a little bit. And then that intervention specialist is pushing into the classroom. So you still have an extra teacher that's going in and providing service, not all day, but at least that person's there for more IEP support.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Megan?
Would we be doing this if it wasn't for the state saying we have to?
You know what, I struggle with that because at the beginning, it was like, oh, this is an awful rule change. Really, it's hard, it's a lot of money, it's space, it's people. Um, but the more I've learned about it, really, I do believe in it because I think trying to offer a more natural proportion to our students with disabilities is better, and our peers. Um, 50% disabilities in a classroom is not natural proportions. And these teachers are phenomenal. When you go in their room, I'm like, my goodness, how do you teach the Gen Ed instruction, do all the IEPs? It's like controlled chaos in a good way, right? But it's so hard because they're doing two roles. You know, whereas in like a typical kindergarten class, you might have, um, 20 students and six on IEPs, but that teacher's not managing the IEPs, it's someone else. So really, when I look at the outcomes, I think it would be better for our students to have that kind of ratio.
One of the things that, uh, we didn't put in the details of the presentation, but George was a great resource to take a look at, what are the projections for our preschool, right? You know, wha- what do we see that? So, so what George did is he took a look at birth rates um, and looked at those birth rates, when they would be eligible for preschool, based on the five-year data that we had. And then he converted that to what percentage of students that are eligible in ages three to six, three to five in that range, um, are eligible to enter our preschool and what percentage of them are students on IEPs that actually attend our preschool? And what percentage of them are typical peers? So we have a, we have a percentage of, of, based on how many students are born in these years, how many of them are going to have, uh, this, a disability and, and attend our preschool and how many are typical peers? And then we can project that out for years to come. So, because one of the things we've noticed is that there have been some bubble years. Uh, you, you know, where we've got this large group, we had it a couple of years ago, right? We had a kindergarten class that was enormous. And then we were saying, oh my goodness, where are we going to put these kids? And then it was, it was just a blip. It was just that one year and it kind of leveled off. So as we take a look at the birth rates moving forward, um, what you're seeing is they, they decline a little bit, um, but, but they're, they level off. So we're projecting similar amounts of students, uh, that would attend our, our preschool as typical peers and roughly within a, a normal standard deviation of, of students within, with disabilities in that, I think you said, Megan, like 90 this year, but, but that 93 to 94 range. So when we take a look at that option, um, A and B, uh, and we say, option B would give us 48 plus 60, so 108, 108 versus 96. The concern is, again, if we do 96, we get mid-year, we're either paying for them to go somewhere else or we're adding a classroom, which is problematic because probably somebody's already in that classroom at Chapman. Um, so that's why, uh, you know, my recommendation to you is when we consider this, we consider option B because it meets with the projections of where we feel our students with disabilities uh, in the preschool range will be. Um, and it also factors in, uh, what we believe to be an even further increase because of the pandemic. What we're seeing is the impact of pandemic on our youngest learners, uh, is having an, an impact and we're seeing a greater level of referrals from Bright Beginnings, a greater level of percentage of students qualifying for IEPs. That's a factor we can't, you know, project out. But it's, it's our best hypothesis that not only are we going to hit that 93 to 94 again next year, but we'll probably see it tick up, um, because of the number of kids that are going to qualify through Bright, Bright Beginnings. And not that we're predetermining any students and whether they're on an IEP or not, but the ratio we've seen in the past is students identified through Bright, Bright Beginnings typically are identified as students that require an IEP. So as you consider and kind of reflect and think and loop back questions, I would focus the attention on, you know, the benefits of the general education, uh, platform that Megan shared from her expert opinion, why she feels that's valuable for our students. Uh, and then option B, which would give us that opportunity for growth without the tremendous risk of what do we do when we hit that and we've got no place for our students to go.
Are there places for the, for those students to be placed? Because I'm, I'm assuming that if, if Brunswick's calling saying, do you have room? I'm assuming it sounds great for a bureaucrat somewhere to say, well, if you don't have enough room to maintain these ratios, you're going to have to put it somewhere else. But as sooner, sooner or later, the real world intrudes and it's like, well, if we don't have room, nobody else has room. Or is that not correct?
So you mean like if we don't have room, when he said we have to pay for them to go somewhere else?
Yeah, but is there a somewhere else?
You know, a provider acts and say, hey, we've got two students to place. And are they going to say, absolutely, we've got room?
Yeah, there, maybe not. I mean, the community preschools here in Strongsville have a waiting list too. Um, that becomes part of the problem that if we don't have a general education classroom or we don't offer it, we have to offer it in the community. So I'd have to say, hey, Sweet Kittles, could you save us 20 spots? I don't know that they're going to do that either because they're in the money-making business. You know, they're a daycare provider too. Um, so that's the unique challenge, I think, that all districts are faced with right now. And it's a challenge. It's a big challenge.
Yeah, I mean, I, what I'm wondering is, is even if, even if Sweet Kittles said sure, they don't have the 20 spots.
Right.
They're, they're full up, just like we're full up, just like everybody else is full up.
Right.
So again, uh, a tangent. The, the one thing- The one thing I would ask to reflect on and have an answer is, is what rules are we coming down? Because some rules, they're rules, but they have a higher cause, or a rationale. And some rules are, well, you have to have a plumbed sink. And it just becomes a rule that we have to check off. But those are the kinds of rules that, you know, we can apply and say, this rule isn't actually helping anything. Can we skirt the rule, or change the rule, or fix the rule? So if, is, as we're going through this, if you find there's things that are just bureaucratic, I think we'd like to know. The Ohio Department of Education works for us, we don't work for them. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. And thank you for our preschool team for being here tonight, appreciate it. What I wanted to share with you next is phase two of our COVID protocol. So last time, not last time, but last month, we started phase one. We talked about, you know, phase one, which was we no longer needed to do contact tracing. We were going to continue to have all COVID positive cases reported, but that's where the change came in, that we no longer needed a contact trace. And so we went through what that looked like, and so we've been living in phase one for about a month. And so I wanted to share with the board, and you have slides in front of you, as I know that's a little small up there, so I will summarize, that the data since we've implemented phase one and stopped contact tracing has been great. You know, in terms of the level of COVID cases. So what you can see here is quarantines are basically non-existent right now. We haven't had any in the last couple of weeks. And these were more self-selected quarantines, maybe, you know, my dad had COVID, so I'm self-selecting that I'm going to quarantine at home as the student. So over the last three weeks, you could see that we had three quarantines. Over the last three weeks, we had thirty-seven total COVID cases, twenty-three at the elementary level, fourteen at the secondary level. So if you take a look at the average per week, we're having an average of eight COVID cases at the elementary and preschool, five at the high school. So if you break that down, that's eight buildings, that's roughly about one COVID case a week at each of the elementary buildings, two to three COVID cases a week at the high school. When you're also talking about thousands of people, that's great data. So part of this was saying, we always use our local data to make decisions, we're in a great spot with our local data. If we just look at last week, we look at our data from Monday to Sunday. So the fourteenth to the twentieth, you could see, we've had no spread of COVID in our district, and we've had a total of four cases. I believe those cases at Whitney are siblings. Correct, yes. So as we take a look at that, over the three-week period, data has been very good. Over the last week period, data's been good, so I am recommending that it's now time to move to phase two, which as in my original presentation, I said phase two would start on Monday and go throughout the end of the school year. So what is going to remain the same? What's going to remain the same is that people still need, staff and students, still need to report COVID positive cases to the district, just like they always have. We're still not going to contact trace unless there's a cluster or an outbreak, and that would be directed by the Board of Health. And when we know of COVID positive cases or other cases, we would still follow the mask-to-stay or test-to-play protocols for staff and students as long as there's no symptoms. So we've been doing that, it's been working well, there's no changes there. What I want to highlight is the changes that I'm recommending moving forward, effective on Monday. So the first change is that currently Jenny updates our dashboard Monday through Friday by 5:00 PM. Our cases are so minimal that I'm recommending that we move now to only updating our dashboard every Friday. So every Friday, she would update that by 5:00 PM, but the Monday through Friday would not be there. Just as case in point, this week, over a four-day weekend, we had three cases on Tuesday, zero cases yesterday, zero cases today. So in terms of, I think about it from a parent or a staff perspective, I want to know how things are moving in each of the buildings. Things are not moving in any of the buildings at any sort of rate, so we think Friday will give a good estimate and a long-term communication platform for that. The other thing that we're doing is, if you remember, every time there was a COVID case, there was a lot of communication. We communicated at a notification that there was a COVID case in the building, there was a COVID case in your classroom, or on the bus, and hey, we identified you as a direct contact. What we were doing over the past month is still providing notifications at the elementary level that there was a COVID case in your classroom. We're recommending now, after a month, I've received no feedback, that people are clamoring for that information or are concerned that it's going away, so we would discontinue all COVID notifications. We would use, our communication would be our dashboards on Fridays. And so that's the second recommended change. And this would just be eliminating from the elementary, because we've already eliminated it from every other level. Lastly, gets into kind of the other things that I want to share with you. It was a general statement that I made last time of, we need to systematically reduce COVID restrictions that, whether it's in schools or buses, that impede what we feel is in the best interest of student learning, always looking at what's in the best interest of student health as well. So I want to share those with you. So I want to take a look at, and kind of the overarching qualifier at the bottom says, I'm going to give an implementation window, but this window is subject to change based on our local data. If things change, we change with it as we have for the last two years. So I want to take a look at, what I tried to surmise here is, here's all the restrictions that we currently have in place, here's what we want to do, and here's the window for which we want to do it. So as we take a look at what's happening in the classroom level, we are still asking our staff and students to keep a three-feet distance. So if we're at the preschool and we want to do a carpet time activity, or a kindergarten, or we want to do groups, as challenging as that may be with three-through-five-year-olds and six-year-olds, we still ask that we keep a little bit of a distance when they do that. We currently have at all of our buildings, the classrooms that have desks are all in rows. And then, you know, for those classrooms that have tables, we're socially distancing at three feet, and we're limiting how many students could sit at a table. So what am I recommending? For the first and third, I'm recommending that we remove all social distancing requirements. We allow teachers to make the decision in terms of, you know, if we want to have math groups, if we want to have carpet time, if we want to have collaborative groups, we don't need to have the social distancing. Why? Because we simply don't have the cases in the building that are saying that we need to have that restriction in, and this is best for kids and best for learning. The second thing is to move away from requiring all desks to be in rows, and allow student seating to be in a manner that's most conducive to student learning. So again, giving the teachers the autonomy to say, if you want to have your students in collaborative groups, because that's how we learn best, that's how we provide our seating, because our data supports that. And so what I'm suggesting is that we start implementing this on Monday, and then we give a two-week window. What I mean by that is that there may be some transition time, you know, there's so many intricacies and unique aspects for every building. I don't want to say everybody needs to do this on February twenty-eighth. I want to say, you know, some of our students have never experienced school in a technical, normal way, and so working in collaborative groups is something that takes a little skill development and training. So there may be a phase in process that's needed, but that gives the window for an opportunity for folks to go through that. So any questions or feedback on my recommendation for basically telling our teachers, you can run your classroom with, and structure it, and set it up in a way that you think is best for student learning? Okay? The next part is visitors. So right now, we limit the number of visitors, school visitors, that are permitted in the building during the school day. What I'm recommending is that those visitor limits are no longer set at the district level, but they're determined by the building principal to, you know, what we've said in our guidelines right now is it needs to be for a specific purpose. Well, that's true for any situation, right? We want parents there for a specific purpose, but give the authority back to the principals to decide. We also had a rule of only one volunteer per classroom at the elementary level. Well, if you need multiple volunteers, I think we're at a place where we can allow that, and I would put that in the same window as the next two weeks. That principals can have that authority to kind of evolve and update what their visitor plan is going to be. I'm going to keep going unless I hear any questions. The next thing I want to talk about is the lunchroom. And so right now, the restrictions we have for the lunchroom is that students, it's different between different buildings. We have some students that are eating in the gyms, some students that are eating in the cafeteria, some students that are eating in the classrooms, and a combination thereof. And then again, at the lunchroom, we have limits to seating tables because we are trying to social distance. Well, if we take the social distancing piece out of it, what we're looking for is allow students to eat lunch in the cafeteria and commons. So to move out of the classrooms, to move out of the gyms, I know Mr. Winkler has talked to me that he still wants to keep the auxiliary gym, a few tables in there, just because of the size of that, and they have that ability in the gym for students that may want to still eat in a less crowded area, that he would still do that. But that we would remove seating restrictions, you know, and go back to the typical aide at a round table, or however many students fit at the long tables at the elementary levels, and we allow students to move back to the cafeteria. And so we would, if you look back at kind of the timeline, for the next two weeks, we would do volunteers in classroom, we'd look at the data, make sure things are trending in the right direction. Then the following two weeks, we would implement the lunch changes. Again, we're allowing for a phase in, this is not a secondary issue, but we have some students at the elementary that have never actually eaten lunch in our cafeteria. And when you talk about all the training that we typically do at the beginning of the year, they're going to need some training, but it's important we do that before the end of the year so they're ready to go for next year. So two weeks, we'll do classroom and volunteers, and then the following two weeks, I'm suggesting we move back to our new normal in the cafeteria. The last one, restrictions that we have in place, is the school bus. So currently, we have a limit of forty-four students on school buses, no more than two students per seat, and we still mandate masking on school buses. The desired, we don't, let me clarify, we mandate masking on the school buses because that's what the CDC requires of us at this point in time. So what is our desired outcome here? We are not looking to rebid buses or change buses and change that forty-four limit in total in terms of an everyday run. However, what I'm saying is that we're fully staffed at the transportation level, but we're struggling with substitutes, just like we're struggling with substitutes around the district. And sometimes that means that we need to do double runs, or we need, we can combine routes to get students home in a more timely manner at the elementary level. So what I'm looking to do is, when we need to at the elementary level, if we can fit three kindergarten students, first-grade students to the seat, and that means that a bus driver can take two bus routes, or split one bus route between two buses, they can do it at the same time they're taking the other kids home, versus doing a route, coming back, and picking up a second group of kids. So I'm asking for, that we would allow to go above that forty-four limit, put three students to a seat in applicable grade levels due to when we need to have, when we have bus driver shortages. And I, you know, we're also, we also, our outcome is that we want to move to optional masking on school buses. We're optional masking in our entire district, that's the only area where we have masks because we're required to. And again, if we can eat in the lunchroom together, if we can sit next to each other in the classroom, I think we can sit on a bus together and wear a mask if that's what we choose to do or not. So the implementation window is that we would start, again, this would be the third set of two weeks, so, you know, four weeks from now, we would look at if all the data is trending in the right direction, that we'd start that April fourth. For the mandatory masking on the school buses, right now, I don't have any authority to make that change. It's not an SES restriction. It'll continue as long as the CDC order is in place. And Mr. Miko, I think based on our conversations, March eighteenth, that order is set to expire?
As of today, March eighteenth, the entire transportation, airplanes, buses, all of that expires, assuming they don't extend it. And I read an article today that the Airplane Assistance Union, whatever their name is, they're not stewardesses anymore. But they're going to be advocating that it's extended, so we'll see what happens.
So thank you for that information. We'll see what happens, and if the order, if the order is eliminated on March eighteenth, then we would go to mask optional at that time. I don't want this to be confused with this links up with the April fourth. If the mask mandate is extended, then we extend it based on the requirements that we have to follow. So that's phase two, that's the implementation plan of reducing some of the protocols and the phasing in of those changes. So if you have any feedback or concerns or questions, be more than happy to discuss.
We're in a good place, and I think everybody's excited that we can finally start doing these things and versus before, where there was a whole lot more stress and concern, et cetera. It's nice that we're in a place that we can do this and do it reasonably. And, you know, you don't think about immediately things like, wait a minute, first graders, first and second graders have never had lunch other than the way they've had. So, you know, taking some time to train them and teach them how to do it, they'll be excited.
Yeah. So I will communicate, based on our consensus here, I'll communicate the phased-in plan with our parents and staff tomorrow, and we'll start to implement that plan. We do have one item on my agenda for your consideration. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association be authorized for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Membership requires that the Strongsville City Schools conduct their athletic programs in accordance with the Constitution, bylaws, regulations, business rules, interpretations, and rulings of OHSAA, and that can be found in Exhibit E. If there's no questions, I'll now turn it over to our operations manager, Steve Brechner, for his report for the month. Steve?
Good evening, everyone.
Now they leave.
Thank you for staying for me.
What hurts more is you stay for the financial report. Have a good evening.
The first item is a revision to the bus bids award. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent. The following revision be made. It's a revision to increase the bid originally listed on the January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one agenda for three conventional, unitized, or complete unit buses at an additional price not to exceed fifteen thousand four hundred nineteen dollars for Myers Bus Sales and Services.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Howson, second by Ms. Stovcek, any discussion? Steve, tell us what's going on.
So what happened is that in a transition from some former leadership to new leadership, a purchase order that was approved in January was not sent until May. So when that happened, we did not receive two thousand twenty-two buses, we received two thousand twenty-three buses. And that bus increase is what's reflected here. I will say, for public consumption, Myers was very good to work with. We've been able to reduce some of the overall cost through, you know, some software purchases, and then also just some minor purchases that were made that, after the fact that they worked with us on this, they understood that it was an error, and so we've been able to keep that cost down. We've also taken steps in business services to ensure that when purchase orders are approved by the board, that they will be in a timely fashion given to the vendors so that those can be converted from pieces of paper worth money to actual products that are here in the district.
So we're going to, I mean, we all need to be more diligent about this. This is the economy or the world we live in right now. I don't, I mean, with inflation, et cetera, current events, the war in Ukraine, we are in a very uncertain time, and businesses everywhere are going to be reacting. So we do need, as a district and as individuals, we need to be diligent on all of this. We are getting the newer units, so there is that, and no different than buying a new car. But if anybody tries to go buy a car right now on any lot, the day of being in the driver's seat when you're negotiating the purchase, it is not as one-sided as it used to be. It's moving to the other side. Any other discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
The second item for your consideration is the Ohio Schools Council's School Bus Cooperative Bidding and Purchasing Program. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Strongsville Board of Education approves participation in the Ohio Schools Council Bus Cooperative Bidding and Purchasing Program, and authorizes the Ohio Schools Council to advertise and accept bids on said board's behalf as per the specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of one seventy-two-passenger conventional school bus chassis and body, and two handicap-accessible buses, in other words, mini-buses.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Howson, second by Ms. Stovcek, any discussion? Steve, why do we need one big one and two small ones?
The reason for this is we're starting to get mini-buses that are seeing more corrosive damage on the body, and we need to replace them. The reason this is coming now, and spoiler alert, you will see one again in the near future, we were just giving... the, in the near, in the near future, we were just given a, awarded a grant that will provide a partial covering of buying new buses right now. The caveat is, they cannot, they can't replace buses that are spares. So, to make this as simplistic as possible, and, and, and again, this is only interesting to, to me and those of my ilk, whenever we, we have routes, that, buses that cover routes every day, just because we have extra buses doesn't mean we decommission them and send them off and, and auction them off. We put them on as spare buses for breakdowns and things like that. Usually, we're able to purchase buses, we then remove our spares, sell them at auction, and, and move everything down the line. With this grant, one of the provisions is that you have to use one of your buses that are on regular routes. With that provision, that does mess up that chain a little bit, but we're still going to be able to get rid of buses that are barely able to pass inspection, they're not unsafe, but we always get from the state, this bus passes, but in a few years, unless you do major structural changes to the bus and the body, never the engine, but the body, it won't pass inspection. We have enough of those minis to justify two right now with the money that's being offset with the grant, and then we can always take one of our older regular routes buses and, and move that, and dispose of those. So, that's why two and one, is because that is the opportunity that's available to us with this grant, and that's why also we're doing this now, where we usually just participate in the fall, this time we're participating this spring, and you'll see one again in the fall. It, it catches up with where we're at as far as the financial planning and the fiscal years, it won't disturb that, it's just the timing is very quick. But that is the reason why, because we will ultimately save some cash by purchasing three buses now with this grant opportunity.
And just, and just to add on to that, so it's a grant from the Ohio Department of Education that was included in the governor's biennial budget, where they'll fund at least forty-five thousand dollars per bus. So our grant award was three buses for forty-five, up to forty-five thousand dollars each that they'll fund, and it has to be expended by, the bus has to be received and the check cut by June 30th of 2023. So by doing now, this gives us some leeway based on supply chain issues and what we experienced with the prior year, so that's kind of what we're coming now to give us that timing.
Before you ask, they're about ninety-nine thousand.
Can we buy more?
If, if we want to...
I, I mean, I know it sounds silly, but...
No, three is the limit.
Three is the, three is the, we can buy as many as one, but three is...
No, no, I meant, can we buy more and have the ODE?
No, that's what they awarded, that's what they awarded us.
Pay for part of them.
And we can't use the, the a hundred and forty thousand that they're giving us in total to buy two buses, that you have to buy, if you buy two, you only get the forty-five thousand applied to each bus. So you can't combine it to, to one bus.
You know, I, I, I'm being serious, I mean, if they're going to cover part of the expense, it's not like we're not going to need the buses eventually, so if we could buy more, buy more.
No, that's all they're giving us, is up to three.
Okay. Any other questions? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Ms. Stojcak?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And lastly, there is a gift to the district that is on the agenda. The Strongsville Giant Eagle Market District donated three hundred canisters of antibacterial wipes to be distributed evenly among all elementary buildings. This donation is a result of a collection from customers donating their complimentary canisters. That concludes my section.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Thanks, Steve. Next up, we have our Director of Curriculum, Erin Green, with her report for the month. Erin?
Thank you, good evening. I have five items tonight for your consideration. Item one is the Strongsville Middle School Program of Studies. So it is scheduling time already for our middle school students. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Strongsville Middle School Program of Studies for the 22-23 school year be approved. Item two is our high school program of studies, and those students have scheduled already, so it's nearly complete. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the Strongsville High School Program of Studies for the 22-23 school year be approved. Item three is Advanced Placement Program Educational Testing Service Rotary Testing Fund. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that Strongsville City School District pays approximately ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars for advanced placement testing costs to be reimbursed by participating students. So we outlay the money, and then we're reimbursed by all students who take the tests. We have item four, a special education practicum placement. Be resolved upon the superintendent recommendation, the following student should be placed for a special education practicum. The student will, or the student teacher or college student will be placed at Chapman Elementary School, starting February 25th through April 28th, and she is a student at Ohio University. And our last item tonight for our DECA students, if you saw, we had sixty students that qualified for state. So this is, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that permission be granted to Strongsville DECA to travel to Columbus, Ohio, to participate in the Ohio DECA Career Development Conference, which will be held March 11th and 12th of 2022. Expenses associated with the trip will be paid by the students, fundraising, and career technology funds. And then additionally, students who qualify at the state conference will be eligible to attend the national conference to be held this year in Atlanta, Georgia, and that's April 23rd through 27th of 2022. Any questions about the program of studies or any of the other items I can answer for you?
Did the, we get, well, the prin, I got a phone call, we all got a phone call from the principal, over four hundred students still at the high school, still were trying to figure out their classes, is that a pandemic issue, or is that an every-year issue?
Every year. We're down to just over a hundred now.
Okay.
Some of these students are, for example, our solo students, who maybe aren't reading the communications that come out, or just other kids who have missed it, so I know they started just calling kids down this week and getting them scheduled.
And then the DECA trip, there's fundraising involved. Speaking on behalf of the board, I'd like to know how to help, so if we can get that information.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. We do not have any items under Student Services, and so I'll turn it over to Jenny Pelco, our Assistant Superintendent for the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have two resignations for non-certificated staff. We have, under E2, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated substitutes, appointments for certificated district substitutes, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts, so we kind of have a dual, dual thing going on here. So these are for 21-22 school year, and then following that, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts for 2022-23 school year. Continuing appointments for non-certificated supplemental, athletic supplemental contracts, again, we have the 21-22 school year, and appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts for 22 and 23. Continuing under E2, appointments for home instruction tutors. Under E3, we have change in status for non-certificated staff, and I need, do need to pull one name and, under this item, from the agenda here, so Jennifer Fathour, where it says Cafeteria Manager from seven hours to eight hours, she elected to stay her seven hours, so do need to pull her from the floor. And then continuing on that, I also need to pull Karen McManaman, Cafeteria Manager from seven hours per day to eight hours, same thing, she elected to stay at seven hours. Under E4, stipend for kindergarten early entrance screening. Under E5, continuing contracts for non-certificated staff. Under E6, medical leave for administrator, medical leaves for certificated staff, and medical leaves for non-certificated staff. And the last thing under E7 is our volunteers, and that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
We do not have any items under Technology, so that concludes my report.
Next, as our reports, Michelle, report on Polaris Career Center.
Yes. Um, we want to give a thank you to Polaris Career Center for hosting our board retreat last week, and as part of that retreat, Polaris is very gracious in providing us food and pastries, and something that was really different and exciting about this, this experience was that we got to sample the competition Eclair of one of our own Strongsville students. Her name is Divine Flanagan, she's a junior at Strongsville High School, and she will be submitting that same Eclair on Saturday for the USA Skills Competition, oh, she'll make it there. So that's really exciting, we wish her good luck, and we enjoyed her desserts, as well as the rest of the food provided, so good luck and thank you, Divine. A couple of other things, I was pleased to see that we highlighted three of our students this week, last week, in our weekly, what is it called?
Mustang Moments.
The Mustang Moments, and then it was on Twitter, I think, this week also, but we have three of our students here at Strongsville High School that also attend Polaris, Hannah Odatala, Jayanna Evans, and Raven Nichols, and they have all earned spots in the Aspire Nurse Scholars Program. All three students are Strongsville High School juniors and in the pre-nursing program at Polaris. Aspire is a twelve-week enrichment program sponsored by the Cleveland Clinic and the Howley Foundation in collaboration with the Ursuline College Brean School of Nursing. The program focuses on providing participants with career information and critical skill sets to support their pathway through higher education, nursing school, and beyond. So they're a part of a very small group, there were over a hundred students that applied, only twenty-eight were admitted, and it's very exciting for both Strongsville and Polaris. This is the first time that Polaris has ever had any student qualify for this program, let alone three at once, and so it's great to have three from Strongsville as well. So congratulations to those three ladies, and we wish them well in their program. Finally, I think that's it, the next meeting is March 8th at 6:30 at Polaris Career Center, if anyone so desires to be public, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Michelle. Report on legislation, Haley, did you have anything, or? I was going to comment, and it'll come up later in our, in our meeting, but the governor signed House Bill 51, which did some tax issues, but it also added, at an, as an emergency approval, the abil, the ability for school boards and other boards to meet, to continue to meet virtually through June 30th, 2022. So later in the session, we'll discuss that and, and take advantage of that, but I did want to highlight that, that although it, although it sunsets at the end of the year, I have a feeling we'll be revisiting it, other states have the ability regardless, not just through the pandemic, to meet as effectively as possible. Board Liaison Reports, I'll start with City Council. We had City Council met twice since our last meeting. Mr. Clark is in the audience, he is our Board of Education liaison, so we always want to make sure to continue a good partnership between City Council and the Board of Education. At the last meeting, some legislation was passed to continue to accept funds for planting of trees throughout the city. Joe D'Amio mentioned that since 1995, I believe is the beginning of the year, but when those funds started to be received by the city, over one hundred twelve thousand trees have been planted in the city of Strongsville. So if you imagine, that's a lot of trees. But I think the point was, is that in 1995, there was not that level of foliage, there was not that level of, you know, beautification throughout the city, so we're going to, the city is going to continue to do that, and we'll be accepting funds, and that's how the trees on the tree lawns, et cetera, get upgraded and planted, so that's a good thing. And then we're, there's another grant, it's a different agency, but it's similar to Silver Sneakers, and once it, once it's approved and put in place, it'll be another opportunity for our seniors to put on sneakers, to get exercise and all those good things. So that's my City Council report. Do we have a Strongsville Education Foundation report?
The next meeting is the second Thursday in March, 7:30 a.m.
Second Thursday in March at 7:30 a.m., excellent. Haley, did you want to fill in for Sharon for Strongsville PTA?
I think...
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Council PTA will be holding their Founder's Day Award Ceremony next Thursday, March 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. This will replace their meeting for next Thursday morning. It will take place at the Strongsville Middle School Auditorium, doors open at 6:30, and we will be honoring all of our Ohio PTA Achievement Award recipients. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Haley?
First, we acknowledge Peggy Kamets as one of our speech and language therapists at our preschool earlier, and this is part of the OSBA Student Achievement. Second, am I supposed to be doing that, or are we still talking about PTA?
You can talk about anything you want, it all fits.
Okay, perfect. Second thing I was going to talk about for Student Achievement is, on behalf of DECA, there's some positive news to share about our marketing program, DECA, at Strongsville High School. This is Mrs. Jenna Namick's third year in teaching the program and be, being the DECA advisor. Every student in the two-year marketing program participates in a district marketing competition against students from other high schools, in addition to the marketing classes that they take. Due to the pandemic, our students participated in the DECA district competition virtually again this year. We are pleased our students were able to participate in some capacity, and look forward to the opportunity to attend the DECA state competition in person in Columbus this March in just a few weeks. Students took a test and submitted a video of their role-play presentation to the judge for grading. Both scores were factored into their final score. The top four individuals and the top three teams in each event earned a spot to compete at the state level. Out of ninety-one students at Strongsville High School who competed, sixty of them qualified to participate in the Ohio DECA state competition, and we are very proud of everything these students have accomplished.
Thank you very much.
And that concludes what I have to say.
On the topics of Strongsville PTA and OSBA Student Achievement.
It's true.
Thank you. Board Committee Reports, do we have a Finance Committee report?
We have a meeting tentatively scheduled for April 4th.
Excellent. Policy Committee?
We had the most recent meeting, January 31st, you'll see here later in the agenda, policy's up for first reading, so if you have any questions about those, please let Haley or I or Cameron know, and our next meeting is still to be determined.
Facilities Committee, I know we did have a meeting last week, do you have a report?
A small one, yes. The, the latest meeting was this past Thursday, February 17th, at which point we had presentations from three different groups. GPD, one group, TDA, another group, and LSCO is the third group, and they were sharing their potential plans, vision, what they can offer us in terms of our elementary buildings and our, that project. So the discussion about those presentations and kind of deciding which way we want to head will take place at the next meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for March 15th at 6:30 in this building.
Thank you very much. Business Advisory Council?
We had a meeting on Friday, February 11th, in this room right here. This was about, talking about experiential learning opportunities for students at the high school. This is for students with a starting GPA of about 2.2 to 2.8 that are not engaging in Polaris or college enlistment or enrollment, and this is a way to get pathways to discover their interests if they might not be on a path to gain full employment after high school. The Strongsville City Schools designed this program that allows students to try on a variety of careers to see the best fit for them, and this says that at the beginning of this course, students continue to, the discovery of their strengths, interests, values, and preferences related to a work experience that they have started in other courses and a school counselor offerings at SHS, or through their own personal self-discovery. Ultimately, students will put their career development pieces together to see a clear picture of the vision of the direction they will follow after graduation from high school. So this is a way of shadowing and getting students into the workplace while in high school, to kind of see what they want to do, because as we all might know, that just because you want to be something, doesn't mean you ultimately will become that after you're done with high school, or you may not actually enjoy that, what you think you want to do, once you see what it all entails. At this time, we have forty-two potential candidates for this program, and we've learned that this helps kids with projecting their voices, interacting, setting up strata, from that to going into the workplace and being ready to work after high school. And this helps students connect their classroom learning with real-world, authentic experiences, allowing them to determine a career pathway that uses their strengths and gives them growth opportunities. We are working on ways to engage with our community, to find different areas or different businesses that would allow these interns or these kids to come in and shadow them, and what the positives are for these businesses in the community to allow the kids to do that. One of the more significant advantages to... One of the more significant advantages to providing internships or any experiential learning experience is the opportunity to select and develop future talent at these businesses. You have the opportunity to evaluate and screen potential employees prior to making a full-time position offer, which leads to financial savings. Employers have reported converting more than half of eligible interns into full-time hires. And if hired in a permanent position, previous interns, um, they assimilate faster to their new roles and have shorter learning curves than external hires. So this is good for both children in our community, businesses in our community, for the growth of everybody. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Haley. And I just was gonna, uh, mention that, uh, yesterday Cameron gave the State of the Schools, and he did a great job of it, and this program was one of the highlights. And I know, uh, I know we're gonna have to tee up, uh, when we have, uh, a little, a little deeper into the program, bringing some of those students there, because it's, uh, bringing some of the students to a board meeting, bringing them here, because it's, it's an exciting program, and I'm really looking forward to seeing it grow.
If I could say something, I, after being in that meeting, I thought it was a wonderful opportunity that I wished that had more of when I was a student at Strongsville Schools. And from what I've heard from the teachers and everyone who took part in speaking, it's giving kids the confidence to go out there and sell themselves, to be able to get a career, to get a job, if they either, A, have an idea of what they wanna do, or they have no idea what they wanna do. So it's preparing kids for real-world learning experiences that they may not even be thinking of, just by giving different businesses in the community that give them the option to come in and intern. So if anyone's watching this that has a business in the community, um, children would be able to leave between seventh and eighth period to start this. They could go into the evening with their work. But if you're looking for somebody to come in and help and potentially turn into a full-time employee, I think this is a great experience for everybody all around.
Thank you, Haley. Uh, next on our agenda is Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the Consent Calendar means that all items in the agenda appearing with asterisks are adopted in a single, single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none. Uh, we did have some adjustments from the floor. Uh, Section Nine, Superintendent's Report, Human Resources, number three. We are pulling Jennifer Fathour, and we are pulling Karen McManaman from the, uh, Consent Calendar. I don't remember any other changes from the floor. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Houslem, second by Ms., Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Ms. Houslem?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Fifteen, Superintendent's Timely Information. Make it quick.
I will make it timely. So just a few quick things, as, as Mr. Miko said, we did have our State of the Schools presentation last night. Appreciate those people that were in attendance or, uh, livestreamed it at home. Uh, if you want to see, uh, the presentation, uh, and fast forward parts of me you don't wanna listen to, you could do that through SCSTV. Uh, so go to our district website, look at SCSTV, and the recording is online there. Uh, we put in our parent update, uh, earlier this week, and got a good response, but just a reminder, student fees, uh, are due, uh, and they're due by the twenty, they're past due now, but, uh, we're asking that they're, get paid by the end of the month. Um, so please make sure that, uh, if you log on to your student's account, uh, check out my update. They give you a variety of options to pay by cash, check, or via credit card, online. Uh, so we appreciate our parents taking a look at their child's account, seeing what fees may or may not be in there, and, uh, taking care of those balances by the twenty-eighth. If you wanna hear some of our talented musicians, again, we're getting into, uh, the next round of concert seasons. So March sixteenth and seventeenth in the high school auditorium, we have our All-City Orchestra concerts on those two dates. Uh, and then we have our All-City Band Concerts, uh, on the twenty-first and twenty-second. Um, and then we have our All-City Choir Festival on the twenty-third at the high school. So lots of great music, um, from our middle school students, uh, on up to our high school students. Do our elementary kids participate in All-City still? Okay. Uh, so that as well.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What does All-City mean?
So All-City means is it's, we're going to gather, instead of just the high school concert or middle school, they're gonna go to the high school, and you're gonna have all ages get up there and perform a few songs. So you, if you go to the March sixteenth and seventeenth, uh, for orchestra, you're gonna see from our beginning orchestra students, uh, all the way on up to high school.
Thank you.
And I know I've attended, and it is, I think it is neat, because you see the progression, and you see how, how you start at one level, and once you get to the, uh, to the high school, as far as I'm concerned, you're with the Cleveland Orchestra.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and congratulations to, speaking of that, uh, you know, recently, we, we praised our band program and the superior ratings that they received, uh, on an individual and group basis. Um, and then this past Friday, at Strongsville High School, our orchestra program performed and, and received all superior, number-one rating. So we know what a phenomenal music program we have, whether it's choir, orchestra, or band. But again, um, when you take a look at orchestra and band and choir, not only is it about the rating, but it's the level of music that you're playing. So our students are playing an extremely high level of music for high school, and they're getting superior ratings. So just another testament to the phenomenal work our, our department's doing, uh, throughout the district. Um, and we just finished up an asynchronous day. We have one more left for the school year, so Monday, March fourteenth, uh, as a reminder, is another professional development day for our staff, um, and a, an asynchronous day for, for our students. So that concludes my timely information.
Any questions? Could we, have we had a chance to digest the survey about the last one?
Not yet. We've, uh, we closed it, uh, yesterday, uh, and then we're going through the, the data. But preliminarily, uh, there was a positive reaction to the Explorer Boards we did. We had a lot more feedback at the elementary level than we did at the secondary level. Um, but there's some, uh, as you take a look at, uh, I, yeah, yes, I glanced at it. So, uh, highly engaging, engaging, overall, it was a positive rating. Um, and so, you know, we're using that feedback to look at what we're gonna do for, for March. And it seems to be a little, a little bit of, um, uh, fine tuning between elementary, which seemed to work, uh, and middle school and high school, which was a step in right direction, but some, uh, modifications that probably we need to do for the fourteen.
Good to hear.
Mm-hmm.
Board Bylaws and Policies, first reading, we do have a number of them. Uh, that last meeting was busy. Uh, so, uh, we have a first reading, we have a second gre-, a second reading, and then the third, the third meeting, uh, we vote to adopt. That is our normal pa-, uh, pattern and practice. Uh, I don't, are there any questions at this time? Board of Education Other?
Mr. Miko, you have an addendum?
Oh, and I do have scratch. I should've looked at my scratch. We do have an addendum. You tried, George, you tried really hard, and I failed miserably. Sixteen B, first reading, and we are waiving the second and third readings. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education approves the following Board Bylaws, be temporarily amended through June, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, as listed in the exhibit, and that's amended bylaw zero-one-six-two quorum and amended bylaw zero-one-six-seven voting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Houslem, second by Ms. Stovcek. Uh, any discussion? So as, uh, I alluded to, uh, House Bill fifty-one, uh, was signed by the governor, and it, uh, on an emergency basis, which means it goes into effect immediately at a state level, we are allowed to, uh, meet, if we so choose, uh, virtually. The caveat is, is we, we as a school board had to check our own, uh, policies and make sure that they allowed for that. And in fact, our policies didn't, so we've amended those policies to allow the entire board or an individual member of the board, should he or she choose, to attend a meeting virtually and still be a voting member. So, uh, amended bylaw zero-one-six-two defines quorum, and we are changing the definition of being, uh, physically present for that period of time. And then along with, uh, zero, zero-one-six-seven, which, uh, defines voting, and again, we are allowing, instead of being physically present, we are allowing, uh, a board member to be virtual. Any questions or other discussion? Did I say it well?
Yeah, and just to clarify too, um, it, the, the governor's action is through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, and that's why the temporary amendment through June thirty, twenty-two is, um, aligned to that.
Correct. There are no other questions or discussion, please take the roll.
Mrs. Houslem?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Now we get to Board of Education Other. Uh, Board Member Professional Development Expenses. Uh, be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education approves reimbursable expenses for Haley C. Stovcek for attending the OSBA program, Board Member one-oh-one, as outlined in the exhibit. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Houslem, second by Ms., Mrs. Bissel. Any discussion? We compliment Haley on taking her responsibilities seriously, and, um, it was two days, wasn't it?
It was.
It was two-
Full days.
Jam-packed, full days of exciting information.
And a snowstorm.
And a snowstorm.
[laughing]
George, take the roll.
Mrs. Houslem?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissel?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Obstain.
And the motion carries. Uh, Meeting Notification, we have a regular Board of Education meeting work session, which will be held March tenth, two thousand twenty-two, seven p.m., at the Meeting Room of Polaris